Need to get rid of them, better to have trucks.
And did you say this is what would be replacing one that's that didn't pass inspection?
Correct, it's a 1990 sitting over the transportation. All they're doing is moving on on site, not on the road anymore. We had this since about about five weeks ago where our cook club truck was down for about 10 days. We had no boxes could not move.
I I know we needed, my question is in 2010, what type of warranty?
Twenty four, twenty four month limited warranty.
There is 24 months.
Yeah, that's included, that's right. It's $58,000 for the truck, $34.95 for the warranty. We have a lot of work for 2010.
Two years. How soon will we have it, assuming approval?
If you approve it, we could have it as soon as it's tried.
How much money does that?
A hundred and fifty thousand for diesel, nothing for.
It's diesel?
Yes.
Can that truck be used for anything else?
So we put a plow on it. I hope this truck now has a plow on it and a standard. What we probably would do is look at during the winter season, he has to keep unhooking the plow and the standard to go pick up the boxes. Now we could dedicate the existing truck to stay plowing and this truck could actually pick up the boxes.
Yeah, we broke down.
If it broke down, we could put a plow and standard on it.
Okay, great, great.
So you're keeping the 1990 truck?
No.
No.
We have it, we have another one that's, we have our first line truck.
Oh, okay.
Which is the 19, now I'm saying, the 2008 that we used for the hooker. But that's all we have, is that single truck we gave over, not to service anymore.
Okay.
Motion approved.
Oh yes, Mr. T.
Just so the council knows, the $175,000 that was issued, it's one of the four sub bonds with a $5.88 million issue that we just had in March. The $175,000 was utilized on prior purchases. We're going out for a bond anticipation note for the $60,000. I talked to bond council today, she said it's an authorized purchase. When you approve the resolution for the original bond, that included the ability for the town to, administration to sell notes. And I anticipate the interest rate on a one year bond anticipation note to be approximately 1.3%. But the plan would be that if we do issue a police bond next year, we would then issue additional money to retire this bond anticipation note. And that $60,000 would be part of the bond issue. And if we don't issue the police bond the next time, we intend on issuing bond, it'll be two years from now. And that would be the remainder of the Arnold Road landfill remediation. At which point we would roll the ban over a second time and then ultimately retire it with that bond issue.
Okay.
So you're approving the purchase of the, you're approving the contract with the funding source. That's the, that's the back of the behind funding source.
And then out of what you've got left, Kevin, what do you have planned for the rest of the?
Nothing, this will complete what I mean by purchases. So there's a $1 billion left over with this because we were able to save a lot of money in our actual bids for the containers, for dumpsters, and for the roll off, and actually the trucks themselves. When we set up the bond, it was based upon estimates from companies. When we actually got to bid with the specifications, we actually were able to save money on almost every item.
Because we've only bonded what we needed.
Yes.
We don't have any extra money left over. There's capacity there, but we don't need the capacity.
We don't, we're not, that extra million is like not there.
Right.
Yes, got it, thank you.
Motion made, motion.
Motion made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck, good luck. Okay, number five, this is George, reference five.
Resolution authorizing reallocation of unused Department of Human Services capital improvement funds for the purchase of a town hall emergency generator.
Mr. Waters.
Yes, Council President, this resolution came before council a number of meetings ago, where the unused portion of the Department of Human Services capital improvements fund would go to purchase a emergency generator for a town hall. Town is looking to purchase a generator on an auction type site such as eBay or more likely GovDeals, where other governments auction off their surplus equipment. So this would be a waiver of the town's purchasing requirements. This is a non-traditional way that we would be purchasing a emergency generator. So there's no competitive bidding other than the fact that we are bidding against other, other purchasers for a generator that we found. And I'll turn any other comments over to Kevin.
Just a little history, last year we ended up bidding on a generator, but we had a $10,000 cap. We stopped at the $9,500 and the generator sold for $10,100. If we were to have the authorization, we would have been able to purchase that then, but we had to stop because of the cap. We're looking for the option to, when it's some available, to be able to handle all town hall in the library. This is the last building, doesn't have any, how the human services is going to have it, it doesn't have a generator. And all of our communications are here, so once this building is down, we have no communication with the town, so we're looking for that also.
Well, it looks like we've got a cap of 45,000 on this one, so what happens if it comes in at 45,000? We lost it, okay, so I mean it's.
You know, a new, a newer one we've already pressed out is about 135,000. And that's in for capital, for capital purchase, you know, in future years, hopefully next year. But in the event that we come across one, we monitor these on a daily basis when they come in.
Yep.
And if it's something they're able to have, well, for the towns to be able to save, you know, numerous dollars to purchase this and go forward.
Now, if, Mr. Manager, if we don't use it, if we're unable, if we're unsuccessful finding something, are we going to leave this in a fund for, you know, as, you know, to get a new one as opposed to the used one, how will that?
That's something that that could be done, or we could retire the capital money and put that into the bond balance or.
We have three years to.
Three years, three years to use that, whether it's a used or a new, at that point in time to include with additional funding to come up there. Okay, good, thanks.
Roughly, you've done some research as to what they might go for. I would say that you're probably thinking that this will cover it.
For a new one?
Uh, used one.
Oh, used one, oh yes, I mean, we're, we're seeing them out there in that $10, $25,000 range.
So this should be safe.
Depending on how new they are, how less hours are, the newer the.
And it's less than 45, it's just our money we can keep.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
It's nice to see you thinking out of the box and trying to save some tax paid dollars like this.
That's good, that we get to bid on something.
Motion approved, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, thank you, good luck. Number six, reference six, this is George.
Resolution authorizing approval of the third year of contract for audit services.
Mr. Waters, Mr. T.
Yeah, I'll turn over to Mr. T though.
This is the last year of the three year contract with Red Island Infrastructure Bank, who provide audit services to the town. And it's a three year bid that was approved in year one, in the way that the contract went. It's despite the fact that it is a approved three year deal, we come back to council every year to approve an individual year as well. So this year the cost is $52,000, whereas last year it was $10,000.
Motion approved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Approved. Number seven, this is George.
Resolution authorizing the refunding of the town's 2007 and 2009 sewer bonds and issuance of the 2016 sewer bonds.
Okay. Yes, it'd be with it, Tivo.
We were contacted several months ago by the Red Island Infrastructure Bank, formerly Queen Water, would indicated that they have the ability to refund, basically, refinance refund of 2007 and 2009 sewer bonds. And what they would do is the Red Island Infrastructure Bank would issue a 2016 series, thus saving us money. There's other communities, the 2007, 2009 bond issues were pooled loan issues, so we share that loan with other communities. And what happened, what's going on is Red Island Infrastructure Bank is going to all those communities to see if they want to participate. And once all the communities have decided whether or not they want to participate, there's still, there's no actual savings are. We refunded the 2006 bond last fall and we ended up, over the life, remaining life of that loan, we'll save $40,000. So we won't know exactly how much the savings will be, most of the solicitor until, I believe, they told us June.
Yeah, early June.
But if the savings that we had realized from the 2006 reissue, that's consistent with what we could see on the 2007 and 9 issue, I'd say it's just over $100,000.
Now, what would happen if a community did not agree to that? If we, if we approved this, does it become voidable or avoid?
Well, if not enough communities join in, then they probably won't do the bond issue and this will be an exercise in futility. You're right, but I, I think.
It makes sense that people get in, involved with it, but you never know.
Won't know until we try. But there's money to be saved for the town, so that's why.
It's a good thing, we'll try for.
Motion authorized.
Motion made, the second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye. Okay, number eight.
Resolution approving the unit, build project, do we?
Okay, give me a guess, Mr. Waters?
Go for it, Mr. T.
Okay.
David, once again, before you, a long process to get the camera road size ready and improvements completed. This went out to bid, the bid was formalized by our engineer, cross engineering, had a pre-bid meeting, went out to bid with the documents, bids came in, and we had two bidders. And the lowest qualified bidder is in the resolution and has been awarded to our community in the amount.
Of 524,000. Eight hundred forty seven dollars.
Which, which comes under our $600,000 estimate and it's being funded through the Red Island Infrastructure Bank and our infrastructure bond.
And you're saying the lower of the two bidders?
Yes, yeah, the number came in 550.
Okay, any questions of the councils?
This is to do the, is this also the place or the place is done? This is the place?
Yeah, it's actually.
We've still been renting those plates all this time?
No, we bought, we council approved.
I thought we did, all right, so then it's done.
Okay, here we go. We will have these for our use.
Yep.
And there's actually three sets of pipes that'll be done and that will already be raised by the foot. It's all been approved by GEM, approved by the state. So you've got some, easements from the neighbors are replaced. Probably start in July.
Motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it, thank you. Number nine, this is George.
Resolution supporting legislation to restore funding for state aid to libraries.
I still miss the bloodshed, motion. Good evening.
The Red Island Library Association is asking Red Island cities and towns to pass a resolution to support their efforts in getting state grant named local libraries restored to the original 25%. So far, I think 18 cities and towns have passed a resolution. Do you have a pretty little map in your possession? Yes.
Or you got a listing?
Yep.
We do.
Yeah, I think it's 18 that have already passed it, and either eight or nine, including cover three, that are willing to take it under consideration. And so they feel the more that are on there, the better the chances are for people to.
Now, we have a, a long list, it's more than 18, so I don't think we have the map you're talking about as to who has, who hasn't.
Is this what you have?
No.
No.
Do you have it?
There's a list of, so you've seen.
Yeah, we just have it from B down to W in all cities, all towns.
There was also an op in in the Province Journal yesterday, did you see that?
I personally did not, maybe someone else did.
I have to read that too, if you would like one.
No, same debate, right, let's go with it. And I've read the resolution, and I guess it's asking the state to give us 25% of the amount the town puts towards the library, is that correct?
It's appropriator or art spending, whichever is the lower.
Right, right.
Exactly.
And it's been less than that in the last couple of years, you said, because of the previous?
This year 17 will be 21, 22%.
21, and, and was it lower than that the year before that, did I read?
No, I think it was 22 the year before that, it's going down every year.
Right.
Because the state legislature has level funded grant made for, since '08 or '09. So the pot stays the same and our percentages within that pot go down.
All the foolish things that the state of Red Island is spending money on, this would be a good one. So we have to get our state delegation to go up there and say, you know, fund it the 25%. That way it puts us, you know, money towards a good cause and good services and everybody loads the library and this way just get what was. Was 25%.
Okay, I see no action in a number of towns, do they have libraries in those towns?
They do, I can't speak to why they don't.
Have you guys the whole state delegation?
I've contacted Niko and Bobby Nambul.
Supporting legislation.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it, let's hope we can get it.
Excellent.
Thank you. Okay. Now, I understand on licenses, if there's no objections, this is George, we could probably take one, two, three, and four, and reference 10, 11, and 12, and 13, and approve them unless there's any, any objections from the council people. They've always got the need fire marshal approval. And that means, George, it would be only if.
Up to the fire marshal's amendment.
Yeah, right, yeah, sure. I make a motion to approve all the licenses subject to all the needs of the town.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good, the ayes have it. And then we have somewhat different, number five, this is George, that is.
An application by Our Lady of Chantistahova for a Class F with dance license, June 24 through 26 of their annual festival.
Motion approved.
Okay, and I wondered, hasn't it been in the past we, we waived the required fees? Is that what we've done before, Mrs. George?
Yes.
Motion approved with the waiver of the, of the.
Yes, for the three.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve with the waiver of the required fees for the birthday and birthday dance in Class F. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. All righty.
Motion open public hearing.
Okay, motion. Motion made and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are in public hearing, open public hearing right now. Mrs. George, reference 15.
This is an application for new secondhand license for Treasure Keeper at 603 Washington Street. It was the old western order.
Right, okay. Is this Mrs. Sherman here? If you could come forward then and just fill us in as to your plans and what have you, welcome.
Thank you.
Name and address for the record.
Jennifer Sherman, 2005, Hudson Pike, Los Conceals. Could you turn the light up the? Oh, it's unplugged again.
Just chill, speak to all of them.
Just speak a little bit louder.
Treasure Keeper, it's going to be antiques, refurbished furniture, and hand crafts.
And what is the location?
Western order.
Oh, the western order.
Yes, yes. All being stored right now, floor will be, all new roofs, everything's being.
Still see the for rent signs in the window though, but.
Yeah, he has them still up, we were waiting for this evening.
Okay, and you say you know what Smithville?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and tell me again, I know you started saying, what are you going to be selling there, but?
It's going to be antiques, refurbished furniture.
Oh, good.
What it's going to be is like little outlets for people to come in and sell their items.
Oh, I see, that's a container.
Yes, they won't have to be there, I'll be running everything.
I see.
So I do have some that are interested in putting their crafts out, some are doing, you know, different items, so it's going to be a mixture of.
Okay.
Will be closed on Mondays, open Tuesdays through Sunday.
Very good.
I'm sure my wife will sleep with that.
Okay, any other questions? Oh yeah, that's true, any comments from the public regarding this venture coming into 603 Washington Street?
But open public hearing?
Can we keep the, open and hear and see if anybody's got any comment on the other two renewals?
Yeah, you can do that, you can do the public hearings at the same.
Yeah.
Just make sure it's a later.
Yeah.
Well, you, you, we have made a motion to go to public hearing.
Well, we're in public hearing, we're already.
That was already done.
Oh, sorry.
So we're done with this, rather than close public hearing and reopen it, I'm just saying that there's two other items.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you for your comments. Then number, number two, Mrs. George.
These are renewals of secondhand licenses for trade winds merchants and homestead interiors.
Okay, we're in public hearing, if anybody have any comments regarding these two businesses on the renewal requests? Anybody from the council?
Motion to close public hearing.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it, okay.
Can we approve all the licenses in one, or should we do them separately? I make a, I make a motion to approve the item one and item two.
Just a question on item one, Mrs. George, I know maybe it was just an oversight, but on the application itself, secondhand check one, neither was checked, does that matter regarding the Treasure Keeper? According to my copy.
It's entity, can ask, are you corporation or sole proprietor?
A she, a mom, huh?
A both, yeah, yeah, so, okay, so it's just a, it's a moot issue?
Okay.
Okay, all right, did all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good, congratulations everyone on the renewals and the new ones. And we go out of public hearing, motion made to go out of public hearing?
No, no, we already, we already did that, I think you just approved, so at least.
Approved, okay. All right, ordinance, M, first reading, Mrs. George, number 16.
This is the first reading of a fair share development for the ordinance.
Okay, clarification or?
Should, let me talk a little bit about it.
Sure.
Our current code reads that no building permit shall be issued, excuse me, no, all development, fair share development fees, also known as impact fees, shall be paid before the issuance of a building permit. Currently, state law says that impact fees only need to be paid before a certificate of occupancy, which is issued after the building permit. So coming to compliance, once again, what the state law should be doing, that we were in compliance before and then somewhere around 2010 when the code was changed, we came out of compliance and we're going back into compliance with state law. Nick, you have anything? No, that's accurate, we, we fully stole defeat from the jaws of victory and now we're going back into victory, so.
Does this require any action on us, just a first reading?
It's a first reading, then, you know, after the notice and everything.
Nick, a motion to pass this for first reading, for advertising?
Okay, I'll grab a second.
Is that what we're doing, putting this to advertising?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, great, second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Okay, N, what would comment? Open. Yes, sir, going on forward. Good evening.
Marco Bowman, 31 Elton Street. I'd like to address some of the ongoing issues with the Elton Street right of way, the pirate lake. This is the right of way that the town anchored into an encroachment agreement over the Abboters. Lori Lanu, 83 East Shore Drive. I just want to point out that this is not some long lost right of way that's forgotten about, that over time, you know, people put fences on and the neighbors didn't even realize it, they didn't know it was a right of way. We actually knew this was a right of way the whole time. This has been, this right of way has been used for years by the neighborhood. It's a nice spot, access to the lake, put your canoe in, go down and watch the sunset, whatever. What, basically what happened is we watched as this right of way got taken over by the Abboters. Private walkway, steps, private sprinkler system was installed on this right of way. All while town officials let it happen right before our eyes. Numerous calls were made to zoning, you know, trees were taken down, no permits for anything. The whole time the town defended these actions. In addition to the encroachments, there was now a surveillance system pointed directly at the beach area of the right of way. It could be legal, however, I think members of the public need to be aware that they are being videoed and possibly audio recorded while they're enjoying the lake with their children. I'd like to thank the new town manager, Graham Waters, for corresponding with me on some of these issues. I've emailed Glenn Shively about these issues many times in the past and he's always referred me to the town manager, whether it be Tom Hooper or Graham Waters. I actually gave up emailing the council president after a rude response that he had from my state representative when I asked him for help. I've even called Mr. Shively on several occasions and he told me he's not, he is not going to worry about our issues. I feel as though our district is not being represented. I'm submitting a property survey for 83 East Shore Drive. It clearly shows that the fence that was recently installed on this right of way, even though town officials insist that it's on private property, it's actually on the right of way. I'm asking for this fence to be moved over to the Abboters' property. I'm also asking for the private sprinkler system to be moved off of the right of way as well as the private steps. I actually have a question too, and I'm wondering about the sprinkler system, if it was looked into whether or not it continues to withdraw water from the lake or if it was actually hooked up to town water.
I'm an engineer, I have an department, my planning department, to go out and take the water.
Okay, is that something I should try out, that new, a new email?
Sure.
Or, I'll try that out and, and the other question I have is, did somebody go out and double check with the actual survey? Or are they just taking the Abboters' word for it that the fence is on her property?
The, the, there was a survey that was submitted to our planning department that shows that it was in compliance, that it's on her property.
That it's on her property, okay. So I have a copy of the survey that I want to, you know, submit, I don't know if it matches the one you have or not, but can I submit it to the town? Thank you.
You will hand it to me, I can take it.
Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Earl Bowman, I'm not supposed to respond to the public comment, but I do have to comment on you, I'm not going to worry about it. I think I've always told you, the last year and a half, and even before I got elected.
Right.
Is, is that I personally, as a council person, am not going to dictate what the landscaper and what the surveys say. We have town managers for that reason and town solicitors, in case it goes to a law case. I'm not a lawyer and I'm not a dictator and I'm not the town manager nor the town solicitor. To say I'm not interested, that's not correct, okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
You told me that you're not going to worry about it, you told me that.
No, I don't think I said I'm not going to worry about it, I said I personally am not going to get involved with it.
Okay.
Maybe that's your interpretation of what you thought I said. But I am personally not going to get involved with it because once I get recommendations, legal recommendations, and to our town manager, then the council, if need be, could take a vote. But to do so premature or to grandstand, I personally not going to do it.
Did the, did the town council take a vote on the encroachment agreement in the first place?
To my understanding, I wasn't on the council then, and I don't think they did. But thank you for that question too, but I wasn't on there.
Okay.
All right, have a good evening.
Okay.
Any other comments, public, yes, sir, way in the back.
Good evening.
Good evening. Name and address, sir, for the.
Doug D. Vellis, 12 Work and Trail, thank you, you hear me okay?
Sure.
I think it's actually, I didn't expect this segue, but it plays into what I had to say.
It's fine.
I had no idea, it has to do with fences. I think there are a lot of unanswered questions about fencing in our town. I came about it and I tried to search online in our site and it only had one hit, and it was for the country landfill, it said fence, just on our online search. So it left me kind of wondering what our rules and regulations are, so I searched the Providence law, I think it's section, if you can read it with me. The only one that I came up with was. The only one that I came up with was 3410-9 placement and partition fences and where they can be placed. I did call the town to find out about it. They're great, very receptive and friendly and got back in touch with me and explained to me, you know, how they believe that was, but there's really nothing in writing about where a fence can be placed. So I'm hoping that the council would look into creating an ordinance to create an ordinance for a minimum of a two-foot to one-foot setback on residential to residential property fences, which I think will help eliminate a lot of legal issues, a lot of tying up things and obviously create better neighborly relationships and when there's conflicting surveys involved. The issue also has to do with putting a fence on a property line is that it can encroach on the other person's property. So if you're digging a hole on a four-foot post, let's say here's the property line, the four-foot post is here, well, to dig that and if you look up those ranges, you're going to have to dig at least, at least six to 12-inch wide holes. So that's going to encroach on the neighbor's property instantly, which is, you know, if that's unauthorized, you know, they're not allowed to be there technically, unless they have permission, of course. So I think a setback would eliminate a lot of that encroachment on someone else's property that can happen when they want to put it on the line. Secondly, fence, if they don't, you know, like the fence and so on. So let's say if one owner puts their fence up first, the other one says, you know what, I don't like that little fence, even though the nice side's facing me, then they go ahead and will have to put up a fence and they have to set it back in on their property X amount of distance, therefore losing their side of the property that the other landowner doesn't have to worry about because they set it up first on their side. So there's issue of kind of, I guess, averaging out the sides, if you will, where that fence can be placed. And also, in the last point, on the maintenance of the fence, if there's any maintenance that needs to be happening, if that person's not looking on the other person's property that's on the property line, well, they certainly can't maintain it the way they need to and that creates a problem too without there being a setback that's well explained, clearly delineated inside the ordinance that I hope can happen. And that would require us to walk onto the neighbor's property, gain permission and so forth and so on. So that's what I'm hoping we can address. And the other thing I didn't have to answer to my questions were the following, and I'm not sure if this is the right place to address this or not, but I didn't have really answers anywhere else. So if there is already existing hedge line or shrubbery line along a property line, does that constitute a fence? And if so, if a neighbor comes into a situation where they want to put a fence up, the other neighbor who doesn't have that shrubbery, are they, is anyone there rights to cut back that to the property line or just before the property line? Where is that cutoff point, literally, when it comes to something with shrubbery? And let's see. I think that was about it. So I ran through that pretty quick and in just a time, I hope that helps in maybe exploring more definitively what fence ordinances may take place in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public comment? Any? Yes. Come forward, please.
Name and address for the record. 26 Sanders Circle.
Yes, good evening.
I've read in the paper, good evening, town council, solicitor, and manager. I read in the paper today that that consent judgment was vacated and there should be no over beating of asphalt overnight. Am I correct?
Yes, yes. You are correct.
Okay. If that's, if I'm correct, why are trucks parked by 3:00 in the morning waiting for asphalt?
That is a good question.
And very loud.
I was going to, you should probably refer that, you know, to the, well, you're doing it right now. So I'm listening. But it's something that I think the, I'm not trying to pass the buck here, but the hot potato, pardon the pun. But I think the town manager might be interested in that. So thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Let me ask you, when was the last time they had the trucks parked along the road?
The trucks? I live on Sanders Circle, I'm right beside it and those trucks are running from 5:30 to 7 o'clock. And I have called the police and they tell me, well, they're not making enough noise.
They were running this morning or were they parked?
Yes, they were.
They were idling there?
Yes, they are. And they're backing up, going forward, you know, the beeping noise.
And this is on a daily basis, Monday through Fridays, and it begins also?
Yes, it is.
And does it end in the evening or...?
It's in the morning.
Just in the morning?
Just in the morning.
Okay.
Yeah, they seem to leave very early at night so far. But I think my husband wrote you on that new, then you just got out. And I think he wrote you about the trucks being very noisy at 6:00 in the morning. I don't know if he got a response yet. I hadn't talked to him before. What do I do now? Do I call the police if I hear this loud?
If it's a violation of the noise law, then yeah, it's not a violation for trucks to be lined up on the street, to my knowledge, unlike even speaking.
But if they're filling these trucks at 7:00 with the hot asphalt coming beside us, a job being needed.
Well, what that might be is, and I'm speculating a little bit, but not too much, the ordinance, which is, it's chapter or code section 153 says that the asphalt plants are forbidden to operate overnight, where they're to operate within certain hours. They can start as early as 7:00 and I'm not sure how late they can run, but I know they can't open it till 7:00 AM. There's a disagreement about what operation means, but I've given an opinion as solicitor, which I think you're probably aware of, that operating means heating the asphalt overnight because if you look up the plain meaning of the word operate, it means doing things like, you know, running a heater to keep something hot. That is operating in the purest sense of the word. So what you're talking about may warrant a little further investigation by the town.
Thank you. Thank you.
And may go court tomorrow. I don't know. Possibly, but there's a possibility.
All right. Any other comments tonight? Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening again.
My name is Lou Dushan, 22 Elton Street, and I'm here on the abutment at the bottom of the street on 183 East Shore Drive.
Okay.
This has been going on about a year and a half. You, I believe, Mr. Shively, are councilmen for that district.
How do I am?
This has been going on for quite a while. There have been a number of things that have happened as far as the butter is concerned with fences and stairs and whatever else I have here. Sprinkler systems and so on. And this just continues to go on. Quite frankly, it just keeps getting schlepped bluff to these two gentlemen here, which are the town solicitors and the town manager as to what is going down at the end of the street at that road. That road was allotted at 25 feet frontage. It has now been quite substantially brought down to a much lower amount of feet. We have at one point been told that this is a so minute problem for this town. It's not mine to us who live in that area or the town people that pay taxes that would like to enjoy that area. But we have been told at one point that it's so miniscule that we should go to the state with it and with the state having all the important things that they have to do, that the, like, we're nothing. This is your job to take care of. We pay our taxes and you're supposed to be the man that takes care of our area and I don't see where a lot is being done. These town and I, I believe, are hopefully trying to do their jobs and it's just not happening. I don't know what privilege this person that lives at 183 West Shore Drive has, but we pay our taxes and we have our privileges as well. When I purchased my property, I was told that I had access to the lake and this access just keeps getting smaller. I am not happy with that, quite frankly. It's getting out of hand. It's costing money that we should not have to pay. There needs to be a resolution to this and it just goes on. Where is the ending of this? Where does the ending come from?
Thank you for your comments. I know that people are looking into it.
But it just keeps getting looking into. Nothing is actually coming to fruition as far as ending this problem.
They are trying and I thank you for your comments. All right.
It just put off like, it just keeps getting put off and just continues to go on, an ongoing problem.
Thank you for your comments. Markings have been made. People have been down there. Letters have been out. Lawyers have been contacted.
We know that.
People have been called.
Yeah, we know more about that.
Not by me, but by the respectful people that we asked to look into it.
Well, we'd like you to do your job.
I have because I ask for it to be looked into versus Glenn Shively going down there with binoculars. Thank you for your comments. Any other comments?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes. Come forward, please.
Good evening.
Good evening. Name and address, please, for the record.
6 Way Oak Court. Upon receipt of the Superior Court's decision to make the consent judgment entered into between the town of Coventry, signed by its then-solicitor Fred Tobin versus T. Mayozi, I was impressed by the statement that started out the document. It was a quote from Henry Wadsworth Longfellow and I quote, "It takes less time to do a thing right than it does to explain why you did it wrong." How true this is. This consent judgment was never in the best interest of the residents. This consent judgment denied the right to safe, healthy, peaceful enjoyment of residents' homes abutting Industrial Park at 75 Airport Road. This consent judgment exposed residents to increased toxins for longer periods of times over the past years. This consent judgment was improperly entered into without following the proper procedures. I believe you could say there was a whole lot wrong. Is there any explanation that can be said as to why it was done wrong? The previous town council is gone and will never explain, apologize, or make it right to the residents. This town council has done great strides with the best interest of the residents, passing ordinances, establishing the hours of operation for the asphalt plants, regulating the marijuana co-ops, establishing hours of operation for firewood, excuse me, wood processing and mulch, just to name a few. Now, we have some members of the town council not to do things right again. I'm referring to the meeting management system that was not included in the budget. I see this decision, that will, I see this as a decision that will cause a lot of explaining as to why you did not do it right the first time when you had the chance. There was a petition that was signed by many residents and it was not supported by this council. It was supported by two council persons. There are many municipalities that have the same program to benefit the residents. It is wrong to deny residents who may not be able to attend the town meetings access to these meetings. I again refer you to the quote by Henry Longfellow, Longfellow, excuse me, "It takes less time to do a thing right than it does to explain why you did it wrong."
Thank you. Any one else? Public comment? Public comment? Public comment? Okay. A motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Happy Memorial Day weekend, everyone.